... us for our August 28, 2024 work session on our judicial and law enforcement potential new building and remodel in our Public Safety Building. So this is a regular work session. We do not take public comment during those. They're generally held right to an hour. We also don't take a vote or make any decisions in that time. It's a question and answer time for us. We do, of course, always take public comment at our 5:30 business meeting, which will follow this. So if you have thoughts of things that occur to you while you're listening to this session, that is a time to bring them back to us. And of course, we are always willing, interested in taking feedback over email and other methods. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah.
Yeah, I'm just going to introduce Jeff Lane with Trainer HL. And Jeff, if you can introduce your team, and I'll let you guys kick it off.
Sounds great. Hello, everybody. So I'm Jeff Lane with Trainer, principal in our Justice Group. And then I've got to my right here, Chris Berkheimer, one of our Associate Principals, and then Tim Ockingay and Mike Comer with J. E. Dunn. So with that, I'm doing all of that, and I'm not sharing my screen, so give me a second. Excellent. So today, we just wanted to come back. I know we met a few months ago and talked a little bit about where we were, where we were going. We talked about schematic design and being complete. We are now completed with design development. So what does that mean? And today, part of what I want to share, and Chris and I want to share as well as Jay Dunn, is we've completed a pretty good chunk of the documents and the design of this project, both from a disciplinary standpoint of our MEP structure, audiovisual and what have you, and gotten most all of that incorporated. We've also engaged all the users to have some great conversations, and we'll continue to do that through our process here as we wrap up documents here at the end of October, first part of November. But what I also want to share with this package is we did have J. E. Dunn put a price together. And so there's some cost components that we'll talk about. We'll also talk about getting to the cost. So as you're probably aware of or know, within a process like this, many times when that first initial cost comes in, you might be a tad bit over what we talked about the last go-round. So we've worked really hard here over the last two weeks. Part of the reason why we had to move the schedule a little bit to come back a little later than what we had originally planned, because we wanted to get it to where it fit within the dollars that we had talked about. So we've done that. We can talk through why those things are the way they are and what we've done to get there today. So a couple of things I do want to talk about as it relates to where we are, we will talk a little bit about sustainability. We've had a really good, healthy conversation through design development to cover that and talk through that and what we are and aren't doing within the project. So I think those are some really good things to be able to share today. I am going to have Chris talk a little bit about the Public Safety Building, because I do think that we've spent quite a bit of time over the last few presentations really honing in on what the visual is, the aesthetics, and how the plan works in the courts and the JLEC. So today, we want to spend a little bit of time getting you familiar with the Public Safety Building.
Okay, great. The image you're seeing there is the site plan, which is actually the current jail site, your next-door neighbor from this space. You're kind of seeing the building on the west side of that existing side. We're utilizing land that's already purchased and owned by the county. One thing you kind of see there is those blue lines, and what that represents is kind of a phased construction approach. And so we know we have the heart of the building, if you will, that is going to be comprised of dispatch, 911, and emergency operations. The spaces above it into the north and the south are more the sheriff's spaces, and those can be added at a different time if needed, if you will, as money is available. A couple of things, we've got a public entry where the public specifically only goes to a small portion of the building, and then the secure staff area, which is in the middle of the building to the west. So the images you're seeing here are kind of our Phase 1, which is what we're carrying in our cost right now, or J. E. Dunn is. It's a two-level space, so that lower level, which is the dispatch and the ELC, dispatch is in blue, ELC is yellow, and it's about 12,000 square feet, and that's partially underground, if you will, is what we're calling it, the lower level. And the level above will eventually be the sheriff's space built out. The areas you see in green and gray are required just to egress and move through that space as they go from the upper level to the lower. This is the entire build-out of the upper level. So the sheriff's operations is in the middle. To the right of that, Sheriff Administration and the public entry. On the left side of it is evidence and kind of property processing areas, along with the workout space, and then vehicle storage is on the very left. And that total build-out is just over 26,000 square feet. These images are a lot of our design, the process of our design, what Jeff talked about. So we've gone into a lot of detail structurally, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, civil, and structural, all in our, we call our construction document phase. What that does, it helps us understand how this building is going together, gives us a lot of detail, and it gives J. E. Dunn a lot of opportunities to figure out what it Some more drawings, architecturally speaking, layout of all the spaces, kind of sections through the building, dimensions, and then some of the wall components and how they go together. More of this is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing design as it is to date. It is ever-evolving. The more information we know, the more information we coordinate and potentially change, but those items become less and less as our process moves forward.
One of the things I want to note on this is if you look at the image to the right, you'll see some ductwork. And as you can see, that ductwork kind of just ends in space. So as you think about shelled space, and as you think about whether we expand the shelled space, some of those are the types of conversations we want to be able to have, because even though it's shelled, we would still want to be able to at least heat the space. We'd want to be able to incorporate sprinkler and some life safety lighting. So those are just some things to think about as you think about maybe what's the next steps or what we may want to incorporate down the road.
That brings up a good point. Even though it's shelled space, we're designing the base, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems for the entire building itself, although it probably won't be built at the very beginning of the project. Electrical and security, the same thing. We've got all the access control, cameras, things that are needed to keep everyone safe and secure that will be involved. And then some of the details on the right are getting into the weeds quite a bit. This is kind of the overall form of the building, and we've been at this form, if you will, for quite a while. I think there's additional images that kind of talk about what it changes to, but the top image is facing kind of the neighborhood, and then the bottom image is actually facing the jail and will be the entrance for staff in a secure type of a scenario.
And as you can see, I think one of the topics that we've talked about quite a bit, whether it's this portion of the project or even the court space, is the natural daylighting. And so you see both windows that we've incorporated and engaged with, but we've also looked at skylights on the roof to capture natural daylighting into some of the interior spaces. Our team is actually working here over the next few weeks to create a sun study that will look at each of these areas and determine some things that I think are really, really important. One of the things that, as architects, we do sometimes is we like to incorporate certain things because it makes a lot of sense for us. But what we want to make sure we do is look at the natural daylighting perspective to make sure it makes sense for the space and the user. So part of what we're going to look at in our sun studies is, do we need all those clear-story lighting? Is it actually advantageous to have all of that? Some of that may be lighting that's good, but may not be advantageous to the spaces below and what have you. So those are things we're adjusting and looking at as part of the cost conversation we've had with J. E. Dunn as well. So those are things you may see change here over the next few months, but that is one thing that we wanted to dive really close into to make sure we get the right natural daylighting and the right energy that we're trying to do within this building.
And Jeff, I would imagine that the dispatch and the ELC, like those spaces really aren't going to have natural daylight. They're hardened spaces to be stormproof, et cetera. Is that correct?
So some of them do have some natural daylighting that come into those spaces. And what we've done, because it is an ECC type of a space, we have created, if I'm not mistaken, Chris, the ability to be able to do some shutters that would allow that space to be fully ECC.
We've brought in as much light as we can in the office space that isn't hardened, and hopefully, a lot of that can spill right into the workspaces for everyone. And if they're not at their stations and at their dispatch consoles, they can step out and take advantage of kind of a nice break area and a two-story space there as well.
I know those spaces also have additional needs for just cabling and the ability to change out equipment without changing out the building itself. I assume there's a plan for that.
Right now, we've got a raised floor, and all that cabling runs from our IT space, which is connected to the ELC and dispatch, behind one wall. So it's fairly simple, and if they need to change, update, without disruption for their whole operations, they can do that pretty easily, yes.
Do you think that'd be something good to bring back at the next conversation, is how many consoles are coming in upfront, and then what does the expand, what could the consoles be expanded to?
So these are, these images are taking some of the form and actually applying materials to them. So we're looking at a kind of a masonry facade, if you will, a rough cut on the base and a smoother on the top. And we've got some different color changes in that material. And then we're looking at an accent color, which is kind of a metal, which, to be honest, that metal corrugation is very similar to the skin that's on this building, to try to get some context and pull all these buildings together. And then there's a lot of red in the jail itself. It's more of a brick. So that's kind of where the red color is coming from. We have just put a lot of these materials together, so they're subject to change, but we think it will be that type of material, whether it's a different color or texture, it may change still.
And this is fully built out, so that visual is not what we would be, is not a part of the current, that entrance right there is not.
Correct. So we've got to design it as a whole building, and now we've got to design it as if it's not fully built out, and they all have to work together, almost like the MEP systems. It all has to work when it is built out, or we'll be causing ourselves problems later. So that's the full build-out, yes.
In terms of the materials and changing from one material to another, is there a cost impact specifically to, you know, kind of the aesthetics that we're looking at? And the other question about it is, does it cause more of a moisture issue if you're changing from one kind of material to another?
Our building envelope will be continuous as far as the vapor and the moisture and the weather protection, so that will not matter with the materials. The masonry might have minor changes, but those are just stock products, nothing's custom. Even the colors of the metal are going to be just a standard metal, Beridge red. And so those products, the metal is less or more, I don't know, they might need to help me, but similar to the cost of the masonry, but one is not exorbitant compared to the other. The glass would be a little bit more expensive, but we've tried to maintain lower glass heights so that we're not creating a large expansive glass cost.
And you say by glass height, is that also so that it doesn't have to be tempered glass?
Well, tempered is a safety issue, and it's around all openings. So if a door's opening and something slams, or if it's lower to the ground, we don't want anyone getting cut or hurt. Besides that, it just turns into normal glazing. Expansive, meaning not too tall. So if we have a 20-foot-tall window system, that's a lot more expensive than a 12- or 13-foot-tall window system.
So I'm not going to try to get into weeds, but I do want to share one thing about windows and glazing. So there is a magic height that you want to stay at or below to create it as a storefront type of a system in lieu of a curtain wall system. A curtain wall system, and Tim and Mike would be able to tell you, is a little bit more than a storefront system. So with this portion of the project, we've tried to really stay within the storefront system to keep that number down a tad bit from a cost perspective. Does the same thing, has the same pieces to it. Really, the only difference when I look at curtain wall related to storefront is curtain wall has a structural component to it from both the lateral loading perspective as well as the glazing piece to it. But then also with curtain wall, you can move the glass from the front to the middle to the back, wherever you'd like to have that, and those types of things, whereas storefront, it's fixed at one spot. So those are some of the differences that you really wouldn't see unless you actually spent some time as an architect and thought about it.
And I very much appreciate conversations around cost when we're looking at materials and choosing some of that, because some of it, we won't know to ask, so I want you to bring that forward to me. The original question was, in changing up and having so many different kinds of visual on the front, does that increase a cost?
Yeah, we've worked with Trainer quite a bit on this, and there was actually earlier renditions of this, where we've actually pared things back and picked materials that were more cost, that you got more value out of. To earlier point, the masonry that is there is less expensive per square foot than the metal panels. So as you can see, there's a lot of masonry. We're trying to use as much as we can and then accent that versus flipping that around, and then glass being the most expensive of those three things. So yes, we've thought about that, and believe it or not, this is the second or third or multiple option to get us to the right sweet spot.
Thank you.
And this exterior image is kind of the other side of the building. So we've got the staff entrance in the middle, which is part of the Phase 1, and then those same types of materials as they carry around the building. And then the kind of the very last part of this image on the left side, it's more of a maintenance, well, not maintenance, more of a storage of their larger vehicles and vehicles they need to go out and perform their work. It starts laying down to almost a metal building-type component, but as we're bringing that metal across the facade, it really helps tie in that lesser-cost building into the rest of the project.
And that part of the building, is that specifically to bring back some of the vehicles that we have in leased space for the sheriffs? So the dive team, the search and...
Yes, yes. We want to get everyone in one spot so they can perform and do their work together without having to go to all those places, first of all, and then to pay rental or storage in some other location. Exactly.
The thing that stands out to me is it's a lot of glass facing directly west with no, nothing that's kind of shading that or anything that, from a sustainability point of view, is that wise?
The glazing itself will be one insulated glazing unit, so that's the best we could provide for that. We can put fred, and we can put materials to help screen those windows on the interior to limit that amount of solar gain, or limit the amount of glass, that simple.
So let's talk a little bit about the Judicial Law Enforcement Center. So again, as I stated, you're probably not going to see a whole lot of pretty pictures today. We've moved into design development. So again, not a whole lot that we have done from a site perspective, but you can see we've now gotten our grades squared away and determined. We've got the south parking lot worked out and identified that was sent to the city. We've also looked at the parking between the two buildings, so between the historic courts and the JLEC. So you can see that we've got those things incorporated. And just to let you know, we did send this and have put this through in processes with the city. So this has been incorporated within our process with the City of Orange. We've moved through the structure. You can see, again, as we've kind of looked through this, how do we actually capture the ability for the steel frame throughout? You can see that this is a courtroom image to the left, and so you can tell that we are spanning the entire courtroom space so that we don't have columns within it. So again, part of what we're trying to get accomplished here is to be able to think about what those spaces look like from a structural perspective, but then also think about it economically. So the middle section where we've got the elevators, we keep a lid on top of that space, and you'll see in a minute, we actually capture, I think you do, capture the ductwork that spans from our lower-level portion all the way up to the, through the tower space, to get to that space so we can actually go into the public area as well as the staff space. So we do a lot of those things to try to keep it efficient and keep things in a way that makes a whole lot of sense at the end of the day, and not to have ductwork expanding through courtrooms and things along those lines. Architecturally, we've captured most all of our spaces, as we've talked about, began the dimensioning process, room numbers, finishes, those types of things. Ceilings, you can see they're to the right. So anything in like a darker gray color is a ceiling or an item that's staying or remaining. So those are things that we're continuing to work through. If it's got a lighter tone to it, that'll be a new space. So we've worked really, really hard to try to, with J. E. Dunn and our team, to think about that strategically so that we're not just going to one space to do something small in the grand scheme of what we're doing, but trying to capture spaces that make some sense, that allow us to save costs to the best of our abilities within the renovation portion. And then exterior elevations that we've completed as well, and wall sections. So part of it here is really putting the building together, so understanding how these materials go together. So very similarly to your comments about the Public Safety Building, we've looked at precast, we've got the metal panel, and then we've got glazing. So here, we've used two different types of glazing. We've got a curtain wall system because of the larger height of this building, and then we have some storefront and window-type areas throughout the building as well. So we've tried to really spend a lot of time with our team thinking about that holistically to make sure it's efficient and what have you. We've worked with a handful of different precasters to ensure that the precast that we're using works well, and we've got some really good pieces that we're doing here. So they've actually came up with an idea of forming the columns as one element and installing them in lieu of three sides and installing them separately. So those are things that we've tried to work together with a multitude of people to think about it a little differently, to try to keep the economics down. Other than that, we'll go to mechanical, and I was mistaken, some apologies. Let me look at my screen here for a second. Yeah, I didn't get you one that showed you the courtrooms, but this is the lower level, so you can see the entire mechanical space that we've got laid out. So all that mechanical has ductwork that runs directly up to each of the floors to capture forced air to those spaces as it relates to the tower portion or the addition portion. We do have new cooling towers that are going there to the, be the northeast, those dark gray spaces there. And then on the right-hand side, you can see, again, just the ability to be able to think about ductwork and what have you within the existing building. So one of the other pieces that you see here is we've got ductwork running in the middle of those two courtrooms. We also have it running a little bit out into the public corridor, again, trying to keep the height. So if you remember right in the study and in schematic design, we want to keep those ceiling heights in those courtrooms at a very good space because of, those are large-volume areas. So by doing some ductwork outside, that keeps those ceilings at a higher level. Plumbing and electrical, again, we've begun to put those in place, both from the standpoint of reusing existing, and how do we tap into each of those, as well as on the electrical side, getting lighting incorporated in each of the spaces as well. So we did do some renderings here for the courtroom spaces, just to kind of give you a flavor. So one of the things I share with each person when I show this image is the wood color will be one color in the room. So my apologies for them being three tones, but they are more the lighter color that you see on the door. So as we've talked through and worked through finishes with both the users, the judges, and staff, the lighter color is kind of where we want to go, similarly to the current, the new courtroom that was just constructed here over the last year or two. Public corridor space, so I will share here, so although we are showing a terrazzo tile in the public corridor space through our process here over the last few weeks, that will be a carpet in lieu of a terrazzo tile, just to make sure we get cost in alignment. We've used carpet, that's not a problem, not too concerned about it. And actually, it'll probably turn out a little bit better for this space because of the noise that may happen. So we talked long and hard about it. We like the harder surface, it's a little bit more durable. You could have some parent or a young child that comes in that brings their cup along with them, and they spill it on the floor, and everybody likes to be able to just mop it up and go. With that carpet, though, the carpets that we are specking and what have you, I'm not going to guarantee anything, but I have used, the carpets we've used, spills have happened, it's a way to clean them, so we're not removing them. They will be carpet tiles, so if we do have a problem, or you have a problem with the carpet tile, Jimmy and I had some really good conversations about that. Being able to remove one piece of tile and put another piece down to maintain that space is, it makes a lot of sense. Again, we've got the, a nice tile on the portal into the courtroom spaces with a wood kind of face piece. To the right of that, you'll see, those are the windows that you saw that faced to the west of the, into the lawn space, as well as the park. We've talked about seating, we've talked about some kind of higher areas for attorneys and visitors to be able to work, talk, think together before they go into court. So those are some of the things that we're beginning to incorporate within the space.
You know, one of our purposes was to separate users in corridors, so that the public corridors there, how do we, how do those get right-sized? I mean, right now, those corridors are very large because they are gathering space also. If the idea is that they're not fulfilling that function, can they get a lot smaller? And is that what we're seeing here?
Yeah, so this is the first floor, and we only did one image on the first floor. And actually, this floor is a little different than the others, and the reason for that is the courtroom that you see directly facing, or directly at the end of this corridor, is a tad bit larger for gallery seating purposes. So we captured more space here in this public corridor space on the first floor. We're actually going to have some seating and some other things that we want to do here. So as we talk to the judges, one of the things we talked about is the courts that happens on this floor may have a little bit more public traffic than the courts that are happening on Level 2 and Level 3. So being able to have some seating here would, made a heck of a whole lot of sense. As you go up to the second and third floor, let me see if I can back up here a second. Oh, sorry, that's the doggone first floor. On the second floor, we are close to, if I'm not mistaken, about 12 feet. So it's very, it's a good right-size. There's, we're not doing a lot of seating, other than what we're doing up against the window area. It gives a great path. So if you do have a family that's coming in, or attorneys and a couple groups that come in, the ability to be able to move through that will be, will be good, but it's not oversized. So it's not a 16 to 18 to 20 feet, which is kind of where you may be currently and what we've seen in some other courthouses as well. So we've really right-sized that, to your point. We've got staff on the other side, we've got the in custody moving through the center of these spaces, so we've right-sized those as well. So here is the, an image of the east elevation, so you can see the existing building as well as the new addition. So part of what I wanted to share here is, again, we are screening the parking, so currently that parking's not screened. We're going to screen it as well as provide a gated space here so that staff that have that card access component are able to use that space. We are keeping, so the staff entrance for the addition is in that glass element that you see that separates the existing building and the new building, the new addition. We are keeping the entrance that is currently the staff entrance there in the existing building for some staff to use as card access and bringing in the DA and some staff that they have to be able to come in. So we are using that for that purpose. And then lastly, the exterior image of the west side of the new addition. So you can see that we've captured a lot of green space. I know that there are trees, by the way, so I just share this up front for us to be able to show the building. We had to, my rendering guy needed to take some trees away from the park area, but there are trees there. Those trees are staying, I want to make that very clear. No tree is going away that is currently in the park. Had a conversation the other night about trees, so I just want to be cautious about that. Again, I think that what we've done here is captured materials that are similar to the existing and created an addition that'll serve the public for a long time.
Again, there's quite a bit of glass, which is expensive. Also, that glass is facing west, is that be right?
Yes.
Just from a sustainability, heating and cooling, long-term cost perspective. So I just, I wonder if that is a place that could be rethought? And then I'm curious about, much of the purpose driving the project was safety, and then there's a lot of glass. So in terms of like seeing people moving it out and going about their jobs and business there, is that a conflict?
A good question. So the, most of the areas where we have the bulk of the glass on this building is on the public side, and it's all about transparency, and that's part of what we've talked about, both from the standpoint of the staff piece, or sorry, from the design element, as well as the idea of being able to bring some natural daylighting into the courtrooms. So although we have the glass here, we actually are doing clear-story lighting that's above the courtroom spaces in these areas to gather natural daylighting. So we're using this glass to get natural daylighting into the courtrooms as well. So we're using this glass to get natural daylighting into the courtrooms as well. And then on the corners of the area, we either have a conference room space or for instance, the corner that you see here on the left hand side of the addition, that's actually a glass well to bring natural daylighting into the public area as well there, as well as some office spaces that are on that side. So that's how we've tried to capture that. We've really worked hard with J. Dunn and the team to right size glass, precast and metal panel on this project. So we, I don't believe we're doing anything excessive. We've been, that's my opinion, as you can take it that way. I will share, though, the other piece to your point about the heat gain and energy efficiencies. So we are using a low E product here. We also have worked really, really hard to make sure that what we're doing in these spaces from the standpoint of heating and cooling, it's not going to be one of those things where we're just blowing air conditioning in this all the time. So we've, we've minimized that together and done an energy study with our engineer to make sure that we do it right and get it right. So I'm not concerned about, I guess that I shouldn't say I'm not, based on what I've done over the years and the glass that I've got, I don't believe, or the glass we have, I don't believe we're doing anything that's going to make this a very un-energy efficient building. We've worked really, really hard to make sure the system's right and that we're doing the right things to make sure that energy is, is, is in the right spot at the end of the day.
And if I could add on security, you know, our security concerns that drove this project really were about different populations being in the same space at the same time. It wasn't external shooter threat conversations. Our biggest concern is that we have inmate, staff in public in the same corridors. So that's the security that we've been focused on.
I agree. I just don't want to give one thing up for another.
Hear that, I hear that.
Well, and I want to touch, I want to come back to this elevation here and I didn't place the south elevation on, but we can come back to that at another time if you'd like to, and I'd be more than happy to talk through that. We've really, so one of the other pieces we talked about, this is the back, the east side. And so these are the judges' offices and other staff offices that are on this side of the building. And so one of the things we've talked a lot about with them and their staff is how do we capture natural daylighting to the staff? So it's not just about natural daylighting to their offices, but their staff as well. So we're working through that. So we wanted to make sure we had enough window space, right, to be able to capture that across their office spaces and/or on either end to be able to gain natural daylighting into that staff corridor space. So that's how we're handling, bringing natural daylighting into those spaces. And actually, I received an email and a conversation about a couple of weeks ago from some staff that want us to, that want to see some studies that we've done to show how natural daylighting is coming in for those staff. So we're doing that and going to be sharing that here in the next week or two with those folks. So I do think that's an important part. Also, I wanted to share these windows here on this portion are not a curtain wall system. So these are storefront system here. So again, we've balanced that, the first floor that you saw, all of that is storefront as well. So really, if you see it as a large expanse, like you've said, those are the curtain wall areas. We're working diligently to think about that maybe a tad bit differently here over the next few weeks to see if there's a way to think about that. But on the same hand, we have some meetings coming up with a group from the historic group that we want to make sure that, that we don't do anything too drastic until we have that conversation.
Jeff, just maybe a comment, if you could go back to the drawing of the front of the building. You know, I, I do think it's important to consider as we look at this, that this, this is a long-term project. This is not this year. This is not five years. This is a long-term, this is, I do appreciate the idea of focusing on transparency of our justice system. There is some value in architectural design here, and I appreciate your work on that. We could certainly create a building that was just a masonry box and tell people to go to work in it. But I, I don't think that's what Commissioner Willie is asking for. I appreciate the attention to daylight and, and I know there will be some cost to glass, but I think that cost is justified to communicate certain ideals to our community that should be included in an architectural project. So I just want to be cautious of always saying, how much do we need, how can we save money? How can we save money? That there is, providing daylight for the people who work in that building is extremely important. And, and communicating to our community, the transparency we want with our justice system is also an important thing to communicate. As far as I know, the project that you're showing us now is still on budget to where we were. Right? So just, I'll add that comment to the mix, that before we go cutting glass here and there and everywhere, it's going to be a trade-off. There also will be a trade-off of cost of design time. We have put a lot of design time into this project at this point. And I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't consider changes, but there will be a cost to all of those changes as well.
So I want to talk a little bit about sustainability and what we're doing within the project. So when I talk about sustainability, and I want to hit it at a high level, because we'll come back again at the tail end, I want to actually put a list together. We were chatting about this and Jamie's been talking with us as well with some things. But at the end of, of our documentation of this project here in, at the end of the year, I want to be able to come back and share all the things that we're incorporating in this project from a sustainability standpoint. So I can't capture them all today, but I want to hit them at a high level because I want to talk about what we are doing. And when I talk about sustainability, one of the things that I want to share is, we've not done this because somebody's asked us to do this. There are some things in this project that are being asked to, to explore and expand. But most everything we're doing in this project from a sustainability standpoint are things that are best practices and you see across the country and other places. So, and we understand that you guys, as a county and as a community, advocate for sustainability. So we're not doing this to try to be lead. We're not doing this to try to get a scorecard, but we're doing this because this is the right thing to do. So I do want to share that because I think those are things that are important as we think about it. And again, we, we started off with a little bit of our commitment. There's a greater purpose and I'm not going to read it to you, but I, I think those are things that we really do care about, not just us, but I think you do as well. So with that being said, we've got a very, very energy efficient building envelope that we've designed for both buildings. So this is a high, high performing envelope that we've got from the precast to the masonry to the metal panel, you name it. These are things that we're putting together from the stud system to the insulation system and all those things that we're building to build this building is going to make this the, one of the most energy efficient buildings you've got and most, one of the most energy efficient buildings in this community. And we're not, and that didn't cost anything. That's just part of what we do to get it right. So when you asked about the glass and the, and the mechanical system itself, right, what I would share with you is because we're able to do those things on the envelope side, our mechanical system isn't sitting here running constantly, right? The other thing is, is how do we right size that mechanical system so that in rooms and spaces that may not be used at times, right? Whether that's in an hour block or whether that's a half a day block, whatever that may be, that system's set up so that it, it's not running at the level that it needs to run if people are occupying those spaces. So those are things that we, we've done really, really well. We've got a, although we've talked about geothermal, and we'll talk a little bit more about geothermal, we did explore that on both of these options, both, both projects. And we looked at that and we'll talk about, we're, we're not doing it. It's not because we didn't want to. The cost that we're going to talk about a little bit didn't bear out, in our opinion and, and others, as we talk through that as a process to get there for within the budget that we had. We're doing LED lighting and controls and daylighting. So everything in this building has a daylighting component to it. So I don't know if, you know, it's interesting, I do this a lot of places and it's fascinating to me that if you go into a bathroom, sometimes there's an occupancy sensor in there and some folks get a little bit out of shape about occupancy sensors. But we're doing those, not just in bathrooms, but in other places too. So that way, if staff leave to go to a meeting and they forget to turn the light off, right? Sometimes I leave my office and I forget to turn the light off and I come back two hours later, my life's been, my light's been left on. With the occupancy sensors, that light goes off, right? After 30 minutes or after, you could set that duration, it can be 15 minutes, whatever that may be within those spaces. So we're doing those types of things from an energy standpoint. And then just the controllability. So being able to control lighting so that lighting's on, so like for instance, on the public space that we've got, the public corridor space. So we can set that up within our control system that it has a duration that it's on. There may be some lights that are on because it's from, from a safety perspective, but the bulk of the lights go off after hours, right? So somebody's not going around having to turn the lights off on the light switch. So we're doing those types of things as well. We're using renewable building materials. So our metal panels are, are precast and then inside with the drywall, we're using low, low VOC paint. All of those things are renewable and, and materials that are, have the ability to be reused materials as well. So products that come in that are manufactured, reusable type materials. So we're doing all of those things. We're not using any, what some would call red materials as well, which are non-sustainable type materials. We aren't using any, I don't think, maybe, I don't think, at this point, but I'll have a better sense of that at the end of the day. But right now, we're not planning to do that as well, which are the kind of materials that people put the big check mark on and say, wait a minute, that's not a good material to be using. So those are things that we've tried to stay away from. We are providing some electronic vehicle charging stations at both locations, both from the staff and the public side to think through that process. It may be that we, we end up with just the infrastructure and then we work through the actual charging station itself at a later time, depending on cost. But for now, we know we are capturing those to be able to think about that so that it's a part of the buildings. And then bike parking, we are incorporating bike parking, both for the public and for staff. So the city has a great requirement that, for staff to be able to park their bikes inside the building. So we are doing that as well in both of these projects. So that's, those are a couple of things. And then we'll talk a little bit more about footable takes. So we are, are doing those things as well, looking at it. So we'll talk about what those costs are. We will need from you at some point, some direction on where you want to go with that. So we've got two options we'll talk about here in a minute. But those are all things we've looked at as it relates to this project. The other piece I did want to mention is we are doing heat recovery on our mechanical system. I'm not a mechanical engineer, so I'm going to try to make this really simple. So basically, what heat recovery does is takes the air and energy that you bring within the building itself and reuses it. So it brings it back into the system and then it repopulates it back in. There's our filters in there and everything else, so that takes out any kind of contaminants or what have you within that airspace. We've done those types of things. Pretty standard system that we've been able to use in the past. It's again, keeps the, keeps it so you're not bringing in 100% outside air. That's where the real energy cost starts to become, starts to go up, is when you're starting to bring a lot of outside air in. I hope that helps on a, on a large scale, think about some of the things that we're doing today within this project. Questions on that at all? Okay. So let's talk about schedule and budget. I'm not sure where I'm at on time, so we'll. All right. Thank you, Tim. Just a quick idea here on schedule. So we did have a public meeting with the, on the building, public safety building this Monday, passed unanimously. We've got a couple of other meetings you can list, look through there as well for the city planning and, and then zoning. And then we have an HRC committee meeting on the Judicial Enforcement Center. We do have, we will have, since the Planning Commission approved in unanimous, unanimously on Monday, we do have a city council meeting on the first as a reading. We'll let you know or let Sarah know if we're hearing anything, but at this point, we think we're in really good shape. And then the last date is December 11th and J. Dunn's planning to come back with a guaranteed maximum price. Tim, you want to kind of walk through that a little bit?
Yeah, from a construction standpoint, it's, it's very similar to the last time where you reported, but the, the goal is to come back in December to be able to start the project in January of 2025. That we'll start with the JLEC addition. That'll go about a year and a half, so that'll be winter of '25 till summer of '26. Concurrently, we will build the public safety building from spring of '25 to spring of '26. And then when both the addition and that public safety building are done, we're able to move occupants from the existing JLEC into those new spaces and it frees up, it, it allows us to do a domino effect renovation of the existing JLEC where we'll attack it one floor at a time. And so we're working through the sequence, but we think we, we're getting close to a sequence that works for staff to be able to continue their operations. So, oh, that renovation would, would then be that summer of '26 till summer of '27. So project completing towards the end of the summer of '27. From a cost standpoint, we took what we, what we're calling the design development package. It gives us a really good package of documents to price. We actually went out to the market for different trade packages and got market feedback. So this is our first time of getting a really good understanding of how the, the subcontracting market is going to view this project and how they're going to price it. So it gives us a really good check number. What you see in front of us is a culmination of a couple of months of work of getting all the costs. You will see that that price is higher than we had presented last time to, to your point, Commissioner, of staying in budget. A few slides more are going to be some options of if we want to bring it down, back to the budget. So similar to the last time, we have broken it up from the JLEC addition, the renovations, and the public safety building. That's kind of how we've estimated each of these independently to be able to think about each of the spaces. If you go down below that first pink line, you'll start to see the contingencies, the design contingency, this is, allows us to fill in the gaps of things we don't know now. So the last time we met with you, that was between seven and eight percent. As the design gets completed, the unknowns go down. So that value goes down and that, that the monies get kind of populated into the actual building. So the next time we come back to you with that GMP, that design contingency will be a lot smaller number. We'll still have to evaluate that with, with staff and trainer of what do we need to, to finish the project, depending on where the design's at. And then soft costs, we've worked with, with, with staff on what are the right soft costs to, to include in this project? So those have been updated. And then the last line that I'm sure you're all excited to see is that cost reduction's on the bottom. So what, what ended up happening is the trainer gave us the drawings, we priced the drawings, and then we looked for efficiencies, to your point. What can we build smarter, better by keeping the same program? So that million dollars in reduction is just our collaboration to say, hey, if you build it this way, you're going to save $100,000 by not changing. And in that million dollars, we haven't changed any programming per se, just built it a smarter way.
Will we get this slide uploaded to us? It wasn't included in our earlier packet.
Yeah, we'll get it uploaded to the packet.
I've given, I've given that to Jay, so he's got it. So let's talk a little bit about cost drivers. So what, what drove some of the things? So for instance, the existing fire sprinkler, unknown. So part of it is, is we, we know part of that building is sprinkled, part of it's not. Because of some of the work that we're going to be doing in existing spaces that don't get renovated, what's that look like? Some of the risks of that? So we've actually brought somebody on board, both Jay Dunn and ourselves, to take a look at that over the next month or so, to be able to minimize the risk of that. Audiovisual and technology, I'm just going to capture together because I want to get to questions. Audiovisual and technology, I will tell you, we've spent a lot of time on that and we have a meeting tomorrow, actually, with the group to circle back and make sure that we have everything that, that's needed and/or can look at it a little differently. So we looked at it holistically from the standpoint of all brand new. We also recognize that there's some new stuff that's been purchased here in the last two or three months even to upgrade some spaces. Can we actually utilize that down the road? So those are conversations we're going to have and to right size those pieces. So part of it is, is we are at design development, so we're not done, done. So our specs also had maybe manufacturers that we probably could think differently about as well, or provide some other additional manufacturers as well. So those are things we're going to be working through here to make sure with our group, to make sure that we get those in place that make a lot of sense. And then lastly, some of the additional reductions that we've talked through is public restrooms that are currently there, some corridor spaces that, on that lower level, thinking holistically, like I said, about the skylight reduction at public safety building. And then, as I said as well, the audiovisual reuse. So we're really working diligently in those areas to think about how we do work, as Tim said, smarter, better, and, and a little bit more efficiently.
I would say, Commissioners, as before Jeff moves on to the next slide, you know, some of those lower level renovations of corridors and restrooms, I mean, some of those spaces are 50 years old. So, you know, I've got some real concerns about places of this building that are particularly that are particularly public facing that will be left untouched while we have some places that are brand spanking new. So I'm going to be advocating that we try to get as much of that public space updated as we can.
And just to tag on to that, and I don't, I'd like to pile on, but I do want to share that one of the things that we've chatted as a group about is those will be alternates within this project. So it's not part of the base number, but we're going to, we're going to finish out the design for those areas and let those be alternates, see where the prices land. So if there are dollars that come available through the project itself that we want to capture and be able to do those spaces, we could do that at that time. So our team's going to take that on and make sure we finish out the design in those areas and look at them as alternate pricing.
I do want to be mindful of time, but I, can you help me just understand what the process of determining that those public corridors, those public restrooms in particular, and I appreciate your point, Sarah, as somebody who's in that building regularly, those, those public facing spaces and functions like bathrooms, which are highly utilized to me are, are a priority. So I'm a little concerned on the face to see that those are the, the ready for elimination if that's what, you know, comes down to it for budget. So I'll just say that's a priority to me. But will you just help me understand the process of landing here? And I don't know if you want to share, but I'm curious to know what other things were possibilities that are not on the, I'm just going to call it the cut list for shorthand.
Yeah. So no, that's a great question. And to be real frank, the public restrooms were not part of our SCAMAG design package. So when we first, when we, when we issued our SCAMAG design package, it was, we had talked about it with staff and as a group and as, as a team that that was, they were there. We weren't going to refinish them. We weren't going to do anything with them at that time. And it was, and as we talked through design development, it was, it was brought to our attention, similar to yours, to what you're saying, Commissioner, is wait a minute, we're, we're going to do all this and then we're not, we're not going to finish out those spaces. And so we went ahead and placed those into our design development package. And so for us as a team, it was one of those things that, well, when I, when I look at cost and I look at drivers, it's not that I'm, that we as a team or myself try to cut things that, that don't make sense. But I go back to, and I always ask this question of, of my contractor that's pricing or my estimator, what's different from SCAMAG design to design development? So if we're over budget, what's different? What did we do that's different? And we asked that question and these were the items that came on, on, on the table. And so for us, it was, all right, we got to pair those back. We got to go back to what we had SCAMAG designed to get us back on budget. And we also did some other things. So it wasn't just, it wasn't just those items only. There's a handful of other items, whether it's the exterior of the building and some other things that we did.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Will you just go back one slide before this question leaves my brain? Courthouse site improvements and public safety site improvements, the lump sum numbers. Can you tell me what the sort of definition of that is, the differentiation? Is obvious to me between addition and renovation, but?
It's really just as simple how we, how we account for things. It is really, what does it take to build the building? What does it take to build all the things around the building, whether it be the site work, the site utilities, the building, moving the dirt? And it's just, it's how we, we think about it and it allows us to compartmentalize and focus on certain areas. So you can think of those numbers combined.
Thank you. That, that confirmed what my thought was.
And then lastly, I just wanted to walk through a little bit. So one of the questions that came back the last public meeting was help us understand a little bit better about the public safety building build out from phases three, four, and five. So you can see the same image that Chris shared earlier today, earlier in our conversation with the phases outlined there on, on, on the right hand side. So you can see there that the ranges that Jay Dunn has looked at as it relates to shelling those three phases. The middle item, which is the public safety building shelled construction, that's the total. So if we were to think about actually taking all three of those phases and building it out as one big package, one big piece, right? Not as individual pieces, but one piece. That's the range we may be in at the end of the day. That's not finished out. So it's, it's basically like I was talking earlier, it's heated, it's sprinkled, and it's ready to go tenant finish as you see fit or as you have dollars. Does that make sense? Okay.
Real quick, Jeff, I want to add in case somebody's got to calculate it out here, you'll notice that those do not add up to that same number. There starts to be some economies of scale when you do them all at once. That's the reason.
And commissioners, I want to say that this has been a conversation that I've been really talking to the design team about continuing to bring in front of the commission. It is never going to get cheaper to put a roof over these places. And I really believe that if we have the roof in place, we have all the civil engineering, all the mechanical, all of those things done through our CIP process, which is commissioners know is cash funded and we are able to pay for as we go, we're going to be able to fill, finish out those spaces pretty, in a, without coming back to the commissioners to ask for additional debt service. So I just think it's, it's important that if we want to try to continue to see the, the real advantage of this space, that we try to do this part of the project. And, and I'm certainly, we don't probably have time today to talk about availability of funds for this project. And we can certainly schedule another time to do that, but we have availability of funds to complete these additional needs.
Commissioners, do you have other questions?
Jeff, I'm not sure that you have this, maybe you do off the top of your head, but I would be interested if you could send me and maybe the other commissions, like the total square foot in design work that was renovated by department and was new by department. So it just sort of jumps out at me that, so for example, EOC, the total square footage non-shelled that will be, it looks like 6,000 square feet if I divide the 12,000. And I'm just interested in comparing that with other departments to get an understanding of, you know, what are the demands of different departments on facility design, facility, facility needs? I don't know another way of putting that, but I'd be really interested if you could send that to me. I don't need it off the top of your head right now.
Thank you, because I don't have that, but I will get that with to Sarah and Jay. So they can share it with you.
I did have an observation. I know early on when we were having conversations about order of operations and what could be done with originally the JLE building, we talked about even looking at another floor in the JLE building. One of the reasons that that was kind of a nonstarter at the moment was because of the location of dispatch of ECC and not wanting to make noise above it. And yet we have finished space, you know, suggested for, for dispatch on a lower level and then shelled space above that for a future build out. So what was the conversation around the noise level and, and being able to, to finish that out and also do dispatch in that space?
Yeah. So, so I think the conversation we were having as it relates to the JLC was not the fit out. So not the, not the interior finish work. It was the fact we were going to build a structure and a roof and an exterior skin on top of another building while people were working. Whereas in this component here, we are going to have that whole entire structure and everything built. And then all you're going, not all, what you're doing then is expanding the mechanical and or electrical and or plumbing systems that are already there. So the stub ups, those main pieces are already there. And then incorporating whether that's masonry, stud, stud backup, drywall, those types of things within that space, the, to be able to do those things aren't going to be as disruptive or disruptive to what the group is below, especially since the thickness of our slab for that group as a, as a roof cap piece is considerably more than what, what you currently have.
And that conversation has been had directly with ECC?
We have talked about that as well.
Commissioners, we're at time. What other questions do you have or thoughts that need to come back to us at some point? No, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I do just want to say that for the record right now, the public safety building is an important element of this project to me. I think that I've made that clear about the process that I, it didn't make sense to me to focus only on this one building when there was a pretty shared agreed understanding that better facilities could be built specifically for dispatch and the growth of that in our emergency operations and more efficiency for sheriff's operations and how all those departments work together. So I'm interested in this part of the project, us getting as much bang for the buck as possible right now. I feel pretty confident that we are likely to, to have the cash available without having to take further debt service, at least based on some of these preliminary numbers. That seems likely to me. I know there's still things to suss out about that, but it will only get more expensive over time. We've talked about that as a theme throughout this. And so for all of the, the newness that is being put into the JLEC, this building build out and making it as complete as possible in these next few years for easier retrofitting and filling in, in the future, makes the most sense to me and seems like it would be the, an important economy of scale in this project timeline that we're talking about. So I just wanted to give that feedback and think that it is an important consideration for us, us as commissioners to figure out how much of those phases can be shelled out and made now. And if we all recognize that that need exists and is likely to only grow and not change materially in the other direction, let's make the investments as early as possible, rather than waiting on things to try and skim the budget or slim the budget down.
And I would be curious for a further conversation about what spaces will we no longer need? Where are the cost savings with that, like not paying rent for the property that houses the search and recovery team, et cetera? 1008 New Hampshire, can that be pulled back in? Like how, where are the cost savings that come because of this project to? So I think there's some options with like the, the building on Massachusetts, 12, with the number?
1242 Mass. So yeah, on that piece, commissioners, I guess I'm, until we, with 1006, I don't, we're just talking about putting a roof over these spaces. So the sheriff's office isn't going to move out. So I don't see any way that we leave 1006, New Hampshire as a part of this initial phase of the project.
And I was saying, this is maybe a future conversation we'll continue to have, if it's not for today. So just, are there other conversations for today or questions?
First, thanks for all the work and thanks for the presentation. I know that you're balancing, having done a few public funded construction projects before, I know you're balancing lots of different things here. And just sort of tag on the Commissioner Reed's comments. I, I'm a, you know, I think shelled space is not a bad thing as you sort of figure out how you might use it. Sometimes in our minds and on paper, even with the best design work and the best intentions of the user, we don't understand quite how to use this space until we're in it. And so I'm with Commissioner Reed. I, I really feel like it's important to make sure that we are thinking ahead at this time when we're, when we've got shovels in the ground to do a lot of the work that we're, that we've identified needs to be done. You know, the JLE is a very old building at this point. And, and I think it's important to consider that while we may not have all the plans for it, we do know what a lot of our needs are and want to make sure that we have the square footage identified to, to meet those needs. Maybe not this year and maybe not five years from now, but at least have that space with a roof over its head so that as we figure out how best to use it. If that means abdicating lease space, that would be great. So I, I'm leaning towards this and I'm interested to hear more, Sarah, in the future about how we might be able to fund that and those bathroom renovations in the, in the JLE.
All right. And just for the, for the public, none of this conversation is involving raising taxes for any of that project. Commissions long before me and long before us have been saving for this project. Much of that would still be funded in cash, but none of it would require any new taxes. And we've made that, you know, clear from the beginning of the conversation. So with that, I believe we will, unless there's anything else, we will recess until our 5:30 business meeting. Thank you all.